The Town Council Regular Meeting, April 24th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Bennett, President.
Natalie, Board.
Ellen, President.
Bennett here.
Wendell here.
We have established a quorum. Please stand for the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Those of you who don't mind, that we're in God's presence. Heavenly Father, let me give you wisdom, because this is the last minute thing. Catholics aren't good at making up prayers.
Because we love to give you wisdom.
Give us strength, look down upon us as we discuss the problems in the town, hear the bickering in the town, hear the upset in the town, but hopefully always coming to a very, very peaceful and loving outcome so that we can always be a welcoming town to the residents and those who are going to have to come and pay rent to stay with us. In your name we say amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will have...
Anybody want the fans on? It's getting warm. There's a lot of hot air here, so should we just get it out of there?
That'll be good. At this time, we will recognize our visitors and have presentations. Mr. J. Ford, Virginia Eastern Shore Keeper. Please come forward. Don't be afraid.
I didn't know I was coming into bickering.
No, 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 you're not. It's all good.
I'm gonna run out as soon as I'm done.
I know, we do.
Thank you all for having me in today. We recently had a transition in Shorekeeper. A lot of you had met my predecessor, Dave Burden. He frequents your town. And so, part of the transition, I wanted to make sure I came out here, let you guys know the new direction that Shorekeeper was going because...
More for the House.
Yeah, I apologize. Can everyone hear me now? Great. So, one of the things I wanted to do was let you know how organizationally we are heading in a more expansive direction in terms of our legislative presence, both in Richmond, DC, and locally, and also our education programs. The legislative and advising capacities are really what I wanted to talk to you all about. But for those of you that don't know, Virginia East from Shorekeeper, we have a pretty basic mission statement, and it is to preserve, protect, and enhance the waters of Virginia's eastern shore. That can be interpreted a lot of different ways, as you can imagine, and so we do dabble in a lot. We have education programs and partnerships with UVA and BIMs, work with the high schools, some of the elementary schools. We also get involved in legislation enrichment in DC, as I mentioned, and we are currently also involved in legislative matters for both of the counties as well. What we also have is a slew of free help. And in the past, that has not been fully taken advantage of because of our geographic isolation and a number of other factors. But as I come on board, one of the main things I want to do was take more advantage of our national assets and our regional assets for Shorekeeper, and not for us as an organization, but for our towns and counties that could use the assistance. And so, that's really one of the things I've wanted to offer to you all today is we have land use attorneys, we have clean water attorneys, we have transportation specialists, regional planners. All of the above are in-house for us and have been traditionally underutilized, and so these are resources that we would like to not, to use for our own purposes, but to also make available pro bono for our towns and our counties. Because for those of you I've met before, I come from Senator and now Lieutenant Governor in Northam's office, and so I'm acutely aware of the financial picture of the eastern shore in our region, and I know that a lot of times when we want to get something done, we simply don't have the resource. And so, we want to be able to plug that hole. When you guys have a question, how is this stormwater issue going to affect us? How is this new regulation going to affect Cape Charles? Come and ask us. We're happy to be that resource for you. Same thing with planning issues, the same thing with your interaction with the county. We will be putting forward an official white paper on Northampton County zoning overhaul, so I'm not gonna really dive into that tonight. I mostly wanted to do an informal hello. But I will say, as pertains to your town and the town edge issues, which a lot of people are, have a lot of concerns about giving up that autonomy, or at least the ability to negotiate with the county on some of these town edge issues, we have done a lot of work on that, and it's information that our representatives from land use institutes and our planner on staff is happy to provide that with you as well, if it would be something useful for the council's consideration and your own. So, I really just, that was it. I just wanted to say hi, and so you guys knew who I was, and if we were, you could give me a call whenever you have a question, and we're happy to put our resources to work for you here. You got a question?
Yeah, I have a quick question, and without delving into the zoning orders too much...
No, I'd love to. It sounds like it's, the room's ready for anything.
I guess if you could give your opinion on why the town of Cape Charles, the Cape Charles Town Council, why should we be concerned about whether or not the county retains the Chesapeake Bay Act on the seaside? That particular aspect of it, what it's...
Sure, that's our major concern, and I will say, you know, for the sake of being honest, I have concerns with a lot of it, but I've been through a lot of comprehensive plans in different regions at this point, and I think the lack thereof here is worrisome to me because, you know, you're really putting a carton through the horse, and that's probably my major concern, is that undoubtedly, Northampton County needs new zoning code. If anyone that's had to do anything with it knows it's a bear. It is, maybe was designed specifically to be that way. And so, it does need to be cleaned up, and I hope that they're able to find a way to do that, but things like the wholesale removal of water protections on the seaside are concerning to us for a number of reasons. There's the environmental impact, but there's also a huge economic development impact. And now we have both the Shellfish Growers Association of Virginia and the clam producers have both came out in clear opposition to this removal. We're talking about $55 million a year industry in our region with about 650 jobs, the vast majority of them in Northampton County, in a county that frankly can't afford to kick its one industry that is the silver lining currently. And I think that, for me, I should say that it's the environment is the top thing, that's my job. Like I said, I think I'm too familiar with the region's financials to overlook the fact that the economic development portion and the jobs picture is the biggest problem. I mean, these, the county's gone on record and said they did absolutely no studies or research before proposing that, and that, that's really scary. You can't, you can't just move a setback by a thousand feet and say they're not gonna be a consequence for that action. And so, that is, that answers your question, that is why that is my primary concern right now. But there are certainly others, and I'll be happy to share them with you in a more formal fashion, if we can be a resource on this topic as well. I know a number of councils are considering resolutions in support of different sections, or wholesaling, or supporting or rejecting, et cetera. If that is something that you all are considering, please use us as a resource for that as well.
Other than the Exmore Town Council, now they had a resolution, did they not?
They did.
And that resolution was what?
Well, they're, they're very concerned with the town edge issue, and I think we're gonna see some other towns follow suit on that. Now, my gut is that Willisburg is also going to say a lot about the fact that they did a lot of work to develop their plan there, and it's being discarded. Even if they agreed with everything, it isn't particularly nice to do all their work. So, yeah, the town edge issue is, it's difficult. You know, you all have a number of issues before you, and, you know, everybody is trying to figure out, how do we bring people here? How do we make a picturesque scene that people want to visit year after year? And how do we build a stable tourism section that's gonna be something that is economically reliable from year to year? And if you don't, if you can't control what you're looking at next to the outside of your town, or if you're getting, you know, some kind of maneuver pile, or if you're getting a development that doesn't go with the plan that you all developed, I mean, a tourist coming here doesn't know that that's not in your town, and you shouldn't be held accountable for it if it's on the drive up to your town. So, I think a lot of, it certainly should be a positive concern for most of the towns. You know, the ability to negotiate that is, I think, crucial, and something that towns shouldn't be giving up.
I know that Mr. Capital was supposed to be here this evening to express his opinions, and he told me that he would be talking to individual council members. But other than that, we welcome you, we thank you, and wish you a...
Thank you so much for having me. I hope to hear from you all. Yeah.
We need you.
You're welcome.
If you leave, watch your speed, go ahead, town.
I saw the chase off of the steering wheel, so I'm running out.
Do you have a question, Joe?
I do.
I'm sorry.
Can you leave a business card?
I can, I'm gonna run out and leave a stack on the table for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item is the Love Installation Presentation. Do you feel loved, Nana?
We're gonna try to bring some love back into the room.
Bring some love in the room. And I do know that Carol and Bruce dance, so we need to get their money.
I'm still Donna Kohler, and I have Mary Elton from Brown Dog Ice Cream, and Sandy McFaul from Yeller Two and I. We're all with the Cape Charles Business Association, serving on their board, and we've been working with Pete in Public Works Department, as well as Jen Lewis in the Rec Department, to discuss bringing a permanent love installation to the town of Cape Charles. This all started in October, when the Business Association sponsored bringing the love installation to the Point, which was a huge, we feel was a huge success. Jen Lewis and I were having a conversation one day, and she said, "I'd love to have a permanent one here." I said, "I would love to have a permanent one here, so let's start working together." So, we began talking about what some of the possibilities are, and we're here today to ask for your support by approving giving us, not giving, but allowing us to use the Point for a permanent love installation sign. The requirements from VTC are that the sign needs to represent the region where it is housed. There's 34 across the state, this would be the 35th one. We did, the other day, receive approval from VTC to move forward with the design, and we have come up with something that we feel represents the eastern shore. The L would be made out of sea glass and seashells to represent the seaside community. The O is a tractor tire that has been donated to represent our agricultural history. The V is a kayak, also donated, to show being on the water and the outdoor adventure sports that are available here. And the E is crab pots for our watermen. They are going to be, it's going to be a large sign, just like the other one, with the Chesapeake Bay hopefully in the background, and they will be on bases that are gonna be movable. So, if somehow they get picked up on some pallet mover, and, forklift, and they can go to the harbor for clam slam, they could go to Aqua for a wedding, they could go to Bay Creek for a golf event, and we have talked about, in order to move it, any costs for the town need to be reimbursed, so we do expect that there will be some sort of fee. I don't know what it is yet, because we need to, we would need to calculate that. The VTC charges a fee in order to bring a sign here, so we felt it's only appropriate for us to also charge a fee in order to move it. And the purpose of that is also to set up a kitty, a fund for maintenance, repairs, anything that's necessary, and to offset the cost of the town time. So...
How are you paying for it?
We are paying for this. We're working with the VTC. Oh, of course, I'm paying for it. So, we have scheduled for next weekend, Saturday, May 3rd, 12:30. And thank you to all of you who have already signed up. Applications are available at Brown Dog, Doris, and Ray Fields. We're asking for a $5 donation for adults, $1 for children, to do a dance walk down Mason Avenue. Be about half an hour. Music's gonna be piped somehow of fun, upbeat musical songs, musical songs. And we're just gonna dance our way from Nectarine down to the Point, where we're hoping the sign will go, and it's just supposed to be all about fun and love.
And love. Have you collected money so far?
We have collected some money so far, yes. Thank you, we have, we have some sponsors. There, we also are working with the VTC on a grant in order to offset some of the other costs, but we are expecting to do the fundraising on Saturday with the Love Walk, and on Friday night, next Friday night, May 2nd, we're also asking our restaurants to come up with a special love cocktail, love appetizer, love dessert, and donate a portion of those proceeds to help offset the cost for the construction.
I'm doing it.
Doris dancing?
I'm ending.
Mr. Godwin is dancing?
Mr. Godwin dances?
Yes. Yeah. So, anyone else who would like to, anyone else who would like to join, you can sign up, and, or you don't have to dance, you can donate. Donations are awesome, so...
What is the, I'm sorry, what is the cost? What will it cost?
It's suggested $5 for adults.
No, not that, the cost to build. And before, before you say that, what did it cost for that love sign that came into town that goes all over Virginia?
It is an application of $500 per week in order to rent a love sign to come here, and the Business Association is the one who sponsored that back in October. We saw a lot of value of it, but we also see the value of having a permanent one. It would be the only custom-made one here on the shore. There is one at Cape to Peak, that is VTC-sponsored, but this would be the only one on the eastern shore.
Made in eastern shore.
Yes, that comes from the community, so...
And what is it gonna cost for the...
Right now, we're looking, we're working, it's gonna be made out of fiberglass. I don't understand that part of it, but it's, it's just under $4,000 that we're looking at right now in construction costs.
So, you're asking us for...
We're asking for you to provide, allow us to use the Point space. We did put a line item in the budget of request, and it would be up to council to decide if you would like to provide financial support for it as well, but we do, we are moving forward with this regardless, and we will do the fundraising to make this happen. Any questions?
Do you feel like dancing, Cheryl?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure, Frank.
We have a wonderfully diverse community of all ages.
Yep.
You say you're gonna pipe music, can you give us a sampling of the style of music?
We're gonna have love music.
Love music.
Happy to love.
It is, it's...
It's only with a beat so you can rap or dance, and it's not gonna be crazy.
You wanna give the keyfunk?
I know, I can't think of the name.
Get a break, get on board, Love Train.
Love Train, absolutely, Love Train. We have the OJs, the Ohio Players, we have the Beatles, we have a little Beyonce, a little Pharrell, so it's, it's a, we tried to create a nice mix, but to keep you moving, okay?
That sounds good.
Okay, so...
Take your money.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, good luck.
Thank you.
I'll be there. All right, we're gonna move on to public comments. It's a full house, so make sure you speak loudly, stay respectful.
Okay, Eastern Shore Stay Organization.
Thank you.
I believe you all have a copy of our new brochure.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sullivan, Town Council, Town Manager. We are the Eastern Shore's Bay Organization, short named ESO. We're here only to ask for your blessing and to give you a heads up on our work and what we're up to. We replace the East, the Bay of the Shore Organization. I am Sandy Bayer, I live at 210 Bay Avenue, I am the Secretary Treasurer. Cheryl Klein lives a little bit south of Cape Charles, she's also Cape Charles resident. She is the Vice President and Operations Manager. Pete Baumann is our President and our legal, schmeeval person, so... And we are in partnership with Dr. Leslie Nelson, who is our mobile vet, who's working with us to help us bring about what we're trying to accomplish. Our mission is to prevent cruelty animals and to help reduce the overpopulation of animals on the eastern shore by offering and subsidizing inexpensive bay neuter services locally. We're able to bay and neuter 20 to 30 animals with every visit, but there's a very long wait, and we have a very long list every month. We're frustrated with PETA, who has been servicing our area recently. They do not have the resources to supply our needs at the moment. We applied, we were incorporated last November, we've applied for 501(c)(3). And we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I don't, I had a larger, this is Virginia Beach Neuter Scooter, but we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to purchase this and bring it into town as our vehicle of operation through ESO. I'll pass this around, if you'd like to see a picture of the vehicle. A new, it's been in use with the Virginia Beach SPCA for several years, and it's become available to us. Our doctor, Leslie Nelson, has examined it, and she's found that it needs little or no remodeling. A new vehicle is something like $200,000, so this is a really wonderful opportunity.
30 seconds, Sandy.
Oh, okay. We're working with Dr. Lafferty, with Mr. Lafferty, who owns the property where the custom carts is, as possible space to park the vehicle. We had a fundraiser, we are hoping to pay for the vehicle with grants and donations when we get our 501(c)(3) designation. We had a fundraiser in last November, we raised $1,800. We have another one coming up that will be on June 1st, it's Cruz on Ms. Jennifer.
Hold on a minute. What did you ask from the town? What would you like to...
Simply, we'd simply like your blessing, and we'd like you to be aware of...
Where will you park this?
We've, we've had a discussion, well, we're in comment with Mr. Lafferty, who owns the property around the old meat store, I believe that's what he is, Meatland. Anyway, he has agreed to rent us space and work with us on the electric and water and that area, so as soon as we get our 501(c)(3), we'll be able to...
You'll be there permanently?
Yes. It will be a mobile unit, we have a driver, we have a vet, we have a lot of support, we've got more people that want their animals bayed and neutered than we can possibly handle. The, it will be there permanently unless we can make arrangements. Financially, we're not real sure where we're going with this, but we financially may need other, perhaps we could take you to Chiquitique for the day, or other people that may need the service.
Last question from me. What are the numbers, and I know that you've been doing this for a long time, out of pocket yourself, what are the numbers with the reduction in the cats and the babies? What do you see?
Reduction, you mean births?
Births, yes. How many have you neutered since you started?
Just this year?
Yes.
We've only been able to have the snip, the snip ban over two times.
Right.
So, we have bait or neutered a total of 60 dogs and cats.
60?
Right.
Okay, and on your own?
Now, if you look at, how many...
Me? 16?
16?
Even in the past two years, I guess.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, the purpose is to reduce the population, we've just got too many animals, and if we can stop the birth and the extra kittens, we'll be in good shape and just let them live out their lives. But Cheryl is the one that takes over reservations, and she's got a waiting list that's incredible, it's just, we can't, we can't supply, we can't supply the need with what we're doing at the moment, so that's...
If we can get our own unit, we hope to offer service four times a month. That unit can do 25 animals per day, so that would allow us to do 100 animals per month versus 60 animals in four months.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything? Was that clear enough? Did everybody stop the talking?
Please, Julie.
Okay, thanks. Come to the fundraiser, Ms. Jennifer and Jennifer.
Thank you. Pat Buckley?
I have prepared a letter for publication that I wanted to bring to you because it's a thank you to you. Cape Charles, a financial success story. Despite frequent alarms from a small but vocal group of town citizens in the last year or so, a systematic review of financial performance...
Pat, they can't hear you in the back.
A systematic review of the financial performance over the past decade shows that Cape Charles is financially healthy. Visitors today see an up-and-coming coastal town blessed with a historic charm and abundant natural features that attract nature lovers and sports enthusiasts. While the changes in the physical attributes over the last decade are easy to see, less visible is the remarkable fiscal turnaround. In 2004, when I first assumed the position of Treasurer, the town was practically on life support financially. Few funds were available for hiring competent staff or performing basic maintenance. Systems were antiquated and equipment was barely functional. Our infrastructure was crumbling from years of neglect. Recently, I revisited the town's financial health, doing a comparative analysis of the annual financial audit reports that are conveniently on the town's webpage and 2013 financial statements. As anyone who cares to check at the record will see, the improvement in the fiscal health of Cape Charles is truly remarkable. From 2004 to 2013, I found the following. The town's total general government average revenues from 2005 to 2013 are upstanding 150% over 2004. Real estate taxes adjusted for assessments have increased only 15% through 2014, while consumer prices have increased 26%. A home assessed in 2004 at $150,000 with a tax bill of $705 is now assessed at $296,000 with a tax bill of $817. 50% of the real estate tax revenues now come from the physical, the value of...
30 seconds.
Value of physical improvements in properties not present in 2004. Tourist-related tax revenues are up 516%. Total town net worth has increased from $6.8 million in 2004 to $25.6 million in 2012. This is net value after subtracting all liabilities, including debt. Debt had increased from $1.8 billion in 2004 to $9.1 million in 2012. What this means is we borrowed $7.3 billion...
Thank you. If you will leave that, maybe we can get copies.
She already has a copy of it.
Thank you so much.
And I also have a copy for the ways, and would appreciate if we could publish, I'm sure Doris here, and the next...
Anyone else? Next. Is that it? Thank you, ladies, good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda, and before you approve the agenda, I have three changes. I'm going to take the appointment of the Treasurer and move it up before the Treasurer gives a report, so you kind of know who she is before she stands up. So, under New Business, New Business A is going to, right before the Treasurer's report. And then, for the sake of travel, National Safe Boating Week proclamation will get moved to Item A under New Business, moves you up a bit. And then the third item... And then the third item, I'm not sure council is aware of, but on May 15th is the grand opening launch party of the Cape Charles Yacht Club Center. Excuse me. Yes, thank you. Which is also our May council meeting. And it is not up to me to make a change without my counsel, so we will discuss that and see what your wishes are. So that will go under New Business F on the end. So that being said, with those changes, could I get a motion to accept the agenda format?
So moved. Second.
Any objections? So moved by unanimous consent. A motion, please, for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Changes? Typeos? Approved by unanimous consent. Okay, Department reports. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Debbie. Look around at everyone. This is Debbie Pocap. She joined the staff. She is our new Treasurer, April 7th, 2014. She is kind of a longtime eastern shore girl. She's been coming here most of her summers. And her family moved to Eastville when she was 16 and her dream was to come back. She's back. So she hopes to move here permanently with her family, raise her grandchildren, and do what we're all doing. Are you going to be dancing at the love train?
I'm not sure about that. I'll donate, though.
Okay, donate. We'll take your money. So everyone, please welcome Debbie. And now for your first... It's easy. Sometimes it's easier standing there than it is sitting here. I'm sorry?
She hasn't been officially elected.
Oh, you didn't be officially elected?
Eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint Mrs. Debbie Pocap as the Town Treasurer.
I'd like to second that motion. Any objections? So moved by unanimous consent. You are our new Treasurer. It gives me great joy. This report's on the March end-of-month numbers. The total cash on hand is $1,189,970. The overall decrease of $177,605 is primarily in the Shore Bank checking account and is due to a debt service payment of $128,790 and a $33,300 payment to Land Studio towards Phase 2 of the trail project. The total in the restricted cash accounts is $356,143. The bottom section of your report shows a tax collection comparison for fiscal year 2014 versus 2013 based on year-to-date totals. Overall, there's been a 5% increase in tax collections over 2013. Business licenses are up 321%, which is a $25,000 increase over last year. Golf cart decals are down by $434 this year, which is a 30% decrease. However, we expect $1,500 this week to come in. License tax shows an 80% increase of $7,977. Mails tax shows a 24% increase of $36,900. Penalties and interest on personal property tax increased by 28% or $6,872. Collection of prior year real estate and personal property taxes increased by 23% or $10,477. Transient occupancy tax is up 78%. The increase is $19,000. Real estate tax collection is down just 2% or $21,000. Personal property tax collection is down by 6% or $5,000. Page 2 of your report. The general fund shows a year-to-date revenue of $1,927,605 and year-to-date expenses of $1,421,951 for a net balance of $505,000. The public utilities fund shows year-to-date revenue of $1,423,372 and year-to-date expenses of $1,144,208 for a net balance of $344,691. The harbor fund shows year-to-date revenue of $625,492 and year-to-date expenses of $835,917 for a net balance of a negative $210,425. Busy season is still pending and the weather's not been favorable this spring. The sanitation fund shows year-to-date revenue of $129,100 and year-to-date expenses of $110,913 for a net balance of $18,187, which is attributable to timing differences. Heather's going to address the capital expenditure. So page 4. You might skip to page 4. That shows collected year-to-date for real estate taxes, personal property, license taxes, and machinery and tools taxes. For 2013 real estate tax, we've collected 88% of the total billed as of March 31st. As of yesterday, we're at 90% of collectibles. For 2013 personal property, license, machinery, and tools taxes, we've collected 85% of the total billed as of March 31st. The total credit card receipts since implementation of the new system in November of 2012 is $231,586.
I want the people to know what the value of the town is, the real estate value of the town on page... Total real estate value on the last page.
The total assessed value?
409.
Yeah, 409,929,500. That's land and improvements.
The collections that we've received to date?
Yes, for real estate. An increase of 2%. And business licenses, we've gotten quite a bit in April.
Yes, I have a comment. I would like to see somewhere on the report that I think there's a lot of smart investments happening and some of it in the town and some of it's a little questionable. But we should not lose fact of what our debt amount is while we're presenting a report. And I think it was the last meeting, I guess in the past, we've had... It took us a while to figure out what that is. And I guess in some circles, there's still a question as to what that figure is. So I would like to ask on our monthly reports, just somewhere have a line item that as we go forward, we should not lose sight of our level of indebtedness. And we recently heard that in 2004, it was 1.8. 10 years later, last month, I was told it was 11.79.
It's a little over 10 and a half.
10 and a half. Okay, well, we hear... Well, if you could put the definitive number...
I can do that.
...in so that it's part of what we look at. We need to look at the good and look at the revenue, but don't lose sight of what we're trying to finance and how we have to pay this debt down.
I can add.
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept the first Treasurer's report?
So moved. Second.
Hearing objections, so moved by unanimous consent. Welcome. Thank you, Sandy. Good job. Planet Commissions and Boards, if you have anything to add over what you've already contributed?
The only update I've got is for Number 3, the Transportation and Technical Advisory Committee. We met on the 16th. The PDC is starting to work out the beginning phases of the feasibility study for setting the bike plan, which will be Phase 2. Well, the feasibility studies for Phase 3, which would bring it into Cape Charles, again, they don't have funding for the actual construction yet, but they got the money for the feasibility study and for the construction drawing. So that's starting to give away. And we started laying out the priorities for the VDOT long-range plan for roads that are in need of repair. Most of the locations are out on 13, not really involved too many town roads or anything. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Any boards need to... Code enforcement?
Sure. Yeah, give me a...
No, if you do.
I have something extra.
Okay.
So just want to give you guys an update as far as this month goes with permits in construction. I mean, I usually give you a monthly end report, but we're so busy, I felt like to give you an update. I mean, I was doing inspections at 5:45 this afternoon, so...
Good for you. And it is good for you.
Currently, we've taken in almost $26,000 in revenue, permit revenue, this month already. And I've done over 50 new construction inspections currently this month, not counting rentals, property maintenance, or grass, fire, all that stuff. And I'm happy to report that the Cape Charles Coffee House now has a fully compliant commercial kitchen. So I'm trying to talk Marta into doing prime rib dinners because she has the best prime rib I've ever had, so...
Pass that on. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Any other boards? Smitty, I know you have something to say.
Well, tomorrow's our Summataniel blessing of the fleet, so I hope everybody here can attend. We've got Congressman Scott Richel coming to town to pay our master ceremonies, plus Linda Willis will be here and Senator Willis now and Dr. Foxman. So I hope everybody can attend. It's going to be a good time.
What time?
5:00. Ceremony starts at 5:30. One thing I might add, we've got two Naval Academy shipyard yard patrol cruisers coming in at 119 feet. They will be coming in tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. They'll be open from 12 o'clock until 1600 tomorrow afternoon or 4:00 p.m. Then on Saturday, they'll be open to the public from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they'll be departing Sunday. So come on down.
I saw them pull ship.
So in the Virginia's end, so across the... It's 5:00.
You didn't remember that the first crabs have finally have arrived?
We had the first significant mine of crabs come across the dock today. There still ain't money. I mean, you know, I think it's been too cold. We've had a rough year in more ways than one over there, so...
Will the crabs be dining with us tomorrow?
I know there will be a push of the crabs that's going to be raffled off. A lot of Christian school, the biggest gym and contest. So there'll be a push of their bites. Raffled off tomorrow, the biggest crabs brought in tomorrow, so I don't know if there'll be any crabs on the menu. You'll have to talk to you part.
Well, if you're new and you've never been, it's delightful. It's just a lot of fun. Very eastern shore, very downhill. Thank you, Smitty. Dave, an update on capital projects, please? Pardon me? Fishing Pier?
I'm sorry?
Fishing Pier?
The Fishing Pier, the old pier has been removed and they started pouring footers for the new pier. I think they got some poured today, so that's moving along. All the lumber for the project is on site, so as they pour the footers, as they progress down the... The footers are going to start constructing the pier. They can only pour so many footers in one shot because of the boom on the crane that they're using won't reach them so far. So they'll start pouring footers coming down the road and start constructing the pier along behind it as they go. Sidewalk out there on Randolph Avenue is pretty well finished. They've got one little... They've got to do the handicap access on the west corner across the street from where this one terminates, so they've got that left to do, but the sidewalk portion of it is complete. The library, the old library, is moving along. They're roughing... The plumbing is roughed in and I think they started roughing in the electrical today. If not, it will be tomorrow or Monday, they'll start roughing in the electrical. So that's moving along. And it looks like Gabe Wagner has pretty well finished the grading around the bathroom, so they should be opening up here pretty soon at Central Park.
Site toured before the May meeting?
I'm sorry?
Site toured before the May meeting?
Site tour of what?
Of the renovations at the former library. For council?
Before the May meeting.
Yeah, we meet there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, before the May meeting, it would be fun to be...
We could be in, but we could be... Let's be there. How about that? Let's be there.
I don't think everyone understands how difficult it is for the child clerk, plus the fact that I know it's not a lot of money, but we do pay rent. We have our own building, which we could set up for meetings, set up for everything, for the elderly, children, gent, whatever, and we never have to dismantle. When you all leave at night, we have to take all this down because this is the Catholic Hall. So it would be nice to have a site meeting before the May meeting and to go through the whatever we name it tonight.
Done.
Done. Thank you.
I have a few questions for Mr. Parker. First one is that it's good to see the sidewalk project coming along Randolph. And as I guess I asked you earlier today when I wrote by, I guess I'm concerned, or I know I'm concerned, about when someone, especially someone in a wheelchair, would get to the intersection there of 184 or Randolph and Fig and they need to go to the drugstore. Are there going to be any additional provisions to make sure they can navigate or have a safe crossing? They just got to wing it with current conditions. Are there any further measures to be taken to ensure the safety of people who have reached that point needing to go to the drugstore?
The route is to come down Randolph Avenue, cross Fig Street, cross Randolph Avenue, proceed down Fig Street, and then cross like you would anywhere else to go into Raydeals.
Okay, now, you're saying that... Now, if you're trying to negotiate on the parking lot, which has to be property, that's a deep curve. I mean, is that the plan, Joe?
Well, that's the route. Correct.
Okay. All right. And I know you've heard me discuss this before, but it seems appropriate now. For approximately 75 years, we have a stop sign. I find it hard to believe we're going to leave that sidewalk like it is and have that traffic barreling out of town at 25 to miles an hour, sometimes more. I think we need to give consideration to the pedestrian crossway, that when somebody's in that, so that state laws that you stop, somebody's in a wheelchair going across the road. I think this is a small enough town with slow enough pace that we ought to consider stopping when people are in the crosswalk and/or if not that, then slowing at least that traffic down without requesting that the stop sign be placed back. I'd hate to think we have to have a tragedy before we realize that. Hopefully, not collectively that stubborn. And then the other concern, I guess it also is a big concern, as I think I mentioned last meeting, I've been watching the grading of the bathroom at the park. But again, someone in a wheelchair creams off the side of that sidewalk, which does not have a railing, they go down, they go to the south side, they're going into a possible, you know, two-foot pond of water.
Right. I think what they're going to do is go into the shrubs. I think there's going to be shrub replainer along there. I think that's the plan.
So the plan is for the shrubs to catch them before they possibly go into the pond?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Okay. Have you... Is this in compliance with the American disability?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
It's no different, Frank, if you look at the ramp or walkway going up to the gazebo. It's not considered a ramp. It's considered a walking surface because it's a grade of 1 to 20. A ramp is considered 1 and 12. So therefore, guardrails were not required.
So I guess just because something's not required doesn't necessarily mean it isn't warranted. So I'll just throw that out there, you know, the fact that you got to run into some shrubs and... I think, anyway, perhaps rethink that a little bit. I have concerns. I just wanted to get them on record.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. No other Department reports. Let's move on to Old Business. Item A, PSA Regional Waste Water Update. Mr. Panic, good evening.
Good evening. Senior Law. Quite a bit has transpired since our last briefing on the... Quite a bit has transpired since our last briefing on the status of PSA and the potential regional wastewater system. The Burt Prophet, the engineering firm, is just about done with the contracted effort of about $70,000, actually, $70,000, for the topographic survey and the first portion of the preliminary engineering. And they have confirmed that the cost estimate of $1.8 million for the system is still reasonable. We did have a meeting, PSA Board had a joint meeting with board supervisors on March 24th. The BOs at that meeting expressed support for the Commercial Southern Node project, and requested that the PSA continue down that path. They did approve the creation of a subcommittee, two BOs members, Mr. Hogg and Mr. Hubbard, two PSA members, myself and Mr. Ingram, as well as two Cape Charles members to be appointed. I believe the mayor's gonna have that on the May meeting to consider that, to try to negotiate a, an agreement between the parties, or, I'm sorry, among the parties, for provision services to the PSA by the town of Cape Charles. Those estimates for those services have been provided by Cape Charles to the PSA and the BOs. And to refresh your memory, for wastewater processing, I believe it was in the neighborhood of $70,000 per year was the estimate. And then the total, depending on what other services were contracted, billing, maintenance, it would come to about $100,000. So, they would like to try to move ahead on that. In the interim, they have asked the PSA to start thinking about other treatment options, including the upgrade of the Bayview system. We have gotten some cost estimates from Burt Prophet on what it would cost to take a look at that system and evaluate it. It would probably cost the county about $30,000, $25,000 to $30,000 to do that evaluation. But we aren't pulled until we can possibly create the subcommittee and commence negotiations. The one other thing that I might mention, or I will mention, is that at the May 20th PSA Board meeting, the engineering firm is going to brief on the status of the project, the route to take, the size of force mains, and the additional financial commitment that would be necessary to bring the project to bid. So, that, that course is a public meeting, and hopefully, we will have a subcommittee formed by then, and everybody will benefit from that briefing. Questions?
The project in the $1.8 million that you're talking about still refers to the Commercial Corridor project out on 13.
That is correct. And that still assumes piping, pumping to Cape Charles for treatment.
Yes, I have a few questions. At last Supervisor Hogg had a town hall meeting in museum last night, a lot of discussion, a lot of it centered around loss of the hospital and need for healthcare services, emergency and otherwise. And I guess my question is, is that it was stated by Supervisor Hogg that with the, in the Nassau Waddix area, or the Southern Node component of what the PSA has been contemplating, there was stated that there's 200 jobs in between the nursing home, cancer center, dialysis center, and whatever other operations depend on the current sewage treatment plant of the hospital, which is very antiquated and in need of work or overhaul. In contrast, down at the Southern Node, in the survey that was sent out to 65 landowners, only 10, 10 responded, and I think only six or seven were favorable, and they were all by entities, men, men in the ballpark, right? Okay. All, all these entities had ongoing septic systems, and there, there was, there was nothing, no promise of any additional industry or jobs connected with that. It was so much riding on, and discussion on having lost the hospital, that why, why is a county and, and Cape Charles as a community, who I would hope would want to retain, retain a, the cancer center, dialysis center, this close in Nassau Waddix, rather than lose that also to a Nantucket? Why, why isn't the PSA first project going where there's a, a substantial need and potential of loss versus speculation down at the Southern?
Well, the PSA actually has had discussions with Riverside, and they are on record saying that they have no intention to close the wastewater system at Nassau Waddix, nor the water system, and that they are evaluating the situation, and when they decide what they're gonna do with the property, that they'll be back in contact with the county and PSA to see if some cooperative arrangement can be made.
But isn't that the same approach that caused Riverside and the hospital to lose patients when, when there was no, no movement on a, on a.
I can't comment on that, the PSA didn't exist at the time, and the, you know, Riverside made that, that determination move. I doubt whether it was based primarily on the need to replace the wastewater system. They've never said that, but I can't comment on that.
So, so you think you're at the, the right end of the county with your PSA?
At this point, yes. I, I have heard, I have heard the, the issue of Nassau Waddix several times. Frankly, it's not much of an issue. They're operate, they have a permitted system that they're using.
It was also stated that they're, you know, they're, they're buying credits, because they're, they have, they're paying for their discharge.
Correct.
That's not meeting health codes, I guess, and I'm not sure what.
It does, it, it, it discharges into Warehouse Creek, which goes into Nassau Waddix Creek, which goes into Chesapeake Bay. They're not meeting their nutrient reduction requirements, and they are a member of the Nutrient Credit Exchange.
So, more than likely, they will go make a business decision pretty soon, not, you know, quite likely, it, it will be because of.
Well, Frank, I would, I would. No, that's not at all true. And, you know, you can, you can address that to the Riverside Board just as well as anybody else, that they have committed to maintain operation of the system for the foreseeable future, and not to allow the customers, the non-Riverside customers, to be left high and dry. That's all I can tell you.
I've had upstairs before, I have strong, I have concerns about this PSA project, what's its effect on our commercial districts, which, the idea of luring up big box stores, pharmacies and such out there, and, and I also question, also question our ability to properly calculate what the end costs are gonna be. I think we have to look no further than, you know, the building of our sewage treatment plant and the largest increase in, in the rates that the town has ever witnessed to pay for a $19 million sewer system, which didn't increase fast at all, opposed to how folks in other areas like Nantucket did theirs for 14 and tripled their capacity. So, I'm afraid we're gonna wake up and find out that we didn't, we weren't sure what the costs were, so our rates go up again, look down to the east end of Mason and see a, and see that we've helped put our pharmacy out of business.
Well, Frank, you know, we've had this discussion before.
I think most of you should stick with, stick with the PSA subject.
Yeah, and.
Well, this is what I'd say the PSA doing.
Well.
So, I.
I would remind you that the cost of the Cape Charles sewage treatment plant actually came in under the budgeted amount, under the engineer's cost estimate.
Well, it can be all under the budget all it wants to, but it still has a definitive cost.
It does, and if you would like to come and see me, I can share with you our engineer's analysis of the cost differences between the Nantucket plant and the Cape Charles plant, and why they're that way. Mainly because of Nantucket in the past actually invested in something that apportions could be reused, and Cape Charles did not. But I'd be perfectly happy to share that with you. And, you know, we can, we can talk about the Southern Node if you like, but before we do that, I would remind you that I think the council expressed a very strong opinion that you not discuss the Southern Node because of your ownership of property in the proposed tax district.
Look, the Southern Node is gonna be a project that the county has.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Panic?
Well, I do, I have a comment. I sure hope you know what you're doing this time, because there's a lot.
Frank?
What about Frank?
Some respect.
Yeah, that's two-way street.
Frank?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Panic? Thank you.
Town code modification, transit occupancy tax, this is an action item.
Madam Mayor, cap, cap, um, my head up. Tonight, we had a public hearing on the town code modifications, the transit occupancy tax. We've had several council work sessions discussing the increase of the transit occupancy tax, also the dedication of the 1% to the East Shore Tourism Commission. And as it, as, as I will review, I'd like to go over, which of these copies up there, of the changes outlined in the ordinance amendment. The violation changes of penalty was changed from a class one to a class two misdemeanor. There was also a few minor changes in the description of the definitions that were reviewed based on the state code. Also, the ordinance was reviewed by legal prior to public hearing and notification. The section 66 dash 57 levied, amount of levy proposed is an increase from 3% currently being collected on the transit occupancy tax to 3.7. As well as the revenue collected from the transit occupancy tax shall be allocated for tourism related initiatives. That does remove the levy of 1% to the East Shore Tourism Commission. However, currently, in our draft FY 15 budget, we do have the level spending at what we expect to come in this year to the Tourism Commission, which is roughly about $18,000 year to date. The 1% that has been paid to the Tourism Commission is roughly $14,005. That is in our, currently in our upcoming budget draft. And some other minor changes, just cleaning up the ordinances. Still some duplication in the different sections, but that is also effective July 1st. That is the highlight of the ordinance amendments. I have a discussion.
I have a question.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to support.
I move that we adopt ordinance 20140424, revising chapter 66, taxation, article 4, transit occupancy tax, section 66 dash 55 through 66 dash 76.
Discussion.
Yes.
I had, oh, I had, you know, there were comments made about the expenses incurred, so I totally agree with the ordinance, which already made the motion. My thought was the date change, you know, January 1st, 2015, since they've already booked for the summer, and so that cost would be incurred by the, the homeowner, the hotel, whatever, whoever gets hit by that. I was just gonna suggest that the ordinance stays as it is, except for change the date from July 1st to January 1st. If you jumped me.
Well, I did it by the order, and I'm happy to amend the motion.
Aww. Nice. Yeah, he does. So, the motion.
Would be the same with the amended, the effect that the ordinance be changed, effective day of the ordinance be changed from July 1st, 2014 to January 1st, 2015.
Do we have a second? Oh, the second we had, does it agree with the, the change of the motion? Or maybe second?
Dora?
Well, if he doesn't agree, if I may.
Well, I think you would move on that amendment and then vote on the main motion. I think you're looking for a motion for the amendment.
I just made the motion.
He made the motion.
I amended my motion.
The amended is.
I spoke that language.
Which means we can proceed, correct?
I want the second.
I'm waiting for the second.
For the amended.
Hello? Who made the second?
I made the, I made the last second.
Do you agree with him? Oh, okay, he doesn't agree. So, we have a motion.
Perhaps we could have some more discussion in case.
We have our discussion, and we will have our discussion before we vote. So, we have a motion on the table to change the date to, to go with the ordinance as it is.
If anything anybody else agrees on needs changing, then we'd have to do this whole exercise again, and if we had a discussion first, then we might, we might find.
Well, we don't have a second anyway, so go ahead. Let's have some discussion.
Thank you. And I, I think you have a very appropriate suggestion, Madam Mayor, of January 1st. I guess my other concern with this is in the enforcement end of it, I, I, well, and that is, in the ordinance, which of our, which, who is charged with the town of enforcing this ordinance? Is there a, is, I mean, I read references to the treasurer and the penalty and interest part of it, if any person failed, shall fail or refuse to admit to the town treasurer tax, it will be collected and paid under article. Whose job is it specifically? Is there any one officer specifically to, to, to seek out the people, or to give instruction to seek out the people?
You'd have to get a license. You'd have to get a business license to rent.
Okay, the answer to that question is, the treasurer would make a notice of a violation.
Now, does it read that the treasurer's, is that in that ordinance, is the treasurer's to make a notice of violation, and then other things go into play?
Anyone could determine if there was a violation in the finance department, based on, based on.
Well, I think, I think the idea that if, if a job is, if I give a, you give a job to anyone, I think you'll soon find out that no one is taking responsibility. I would suggest that somewhere in here, that there'd be language that the treasurer should have, should, should seek, it's the treasurer's responsibility to be responsible for, to compile, you know, the information of who is and who isn't paying this tax, so it's equitably collected.
66 dash 64 states that, Frank, any person whose duty it is to do so shall fail to pay, blah, 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 the town treasurer shall be perceived in a manner that is practical to obtain tax information on which to base an estimate of the tax due, and as soon as that has happened, the treasurer will proceed to determine and assess such person the tax penalty and interest provided in this article.
Frank, Pat Buckley upset the whole apple cart years ago when she was the treasurer, because she went after all the people that were advertising Cape Charles on B&amp;B rentals, Airbnb, although, not Airbnb, I always wanted to take the capital, because I'm in the town. But Pat pursued a big chunk of people, feathers were ruffled, but it was fantastic. Now, Dory brings up about imposing, you're all over the town, you got a satellite over the town, it's up to the citizens. You know somebody who is, who's stealing, and I'm paying, and they're stealing money. I think every citizen should come forward, not try to set something up like the Soviet Union, but the only way you can do it, oh, it's my family. Well, it has to be the largest family since the Irish moved to America. Some of these houses, it's family, 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 and it's not. There's money changing hands, and they're making money, so it's up to the citizens, along with the treasurer, to go on to vacation rentals.
Not only that, we get licenses to do business, we get a license to register our dog, we get a license, we follow the law.
They don't.
If there are people, there are people that do not follow the law, Mr. Wendell, eventually, and maybe there should be bad fines, but eventually they get caught. I don't, I don't want a police. I might turn you in, though, if you rented out your house.
Debbie speaks about...
I don't think it's a huge issue.
Well, let me ask this question. Over the last, since Ms. Buckley has left, how many notices has our treasurer sent out that just...
Is that relevant to this?
No. It's not what we're doing, Frank. We're trying to decide on it.
We've discussed this ordinance in a number of meetings, Frank, already. If you're not ready to vote on it, then, you know, I'll happily withdraw my motion, and we can have another workshop on it.
No, I'm ready to vote. I was seeking clarification of my concern. And I appreciate you helping me.
Find the page where it said the treasurer. He did help you. Okay, so you have a motion with a change.
With no second.
I'm sorry, with no second.
Okay, I'll make that second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? We need a roll call vote on ordinance 20140424. I will not read the ordinance, but it is revising chapter 66 with the correction on the date, taxation, article four, transient occupancy tax, section 66-55 through 66-76. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Natalia, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, no.
Wendell, no.
Okay. So it's good, right? Three. It's not a, we don't need a super majority. Shall move by...
January 1st.
January 1st. To accommodate all those that have booked their, how many that may be. Now, we will... Yes, at this time I'm gonna move, even though you have approved the changes. I didn't know it would take this long. We're gonna move, because they have miles to go before they speak, the National Safe Voting Week proclamation. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience. Okay.
You gonna read it, or you want me to just talk about it?
Don't talk about it.
Thanks for taking some time.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rick Farman. I am with the Coast Guard Auxiliary, Port Ellen Club Two. You probably know Ron West. He is also with our portfolio. And we have Chief Stone, officer in charge of station Cape Charles, here with us tonight. National Safe Voting Council has proclaimed May 17th through the 23rd as National Safe Voting Week. We'd also like for the town council of Cape Charles, since it's a very busy harbor here, to proclaim the same. About approximately 700 to 800 people now each year are traveling, and about 70% of those people are not wearing leg jackets. So with this week in May, auxiliary, the Coast Guard, the Marine Police, everybody who's out there trying to educate the public on the importance of wearing a leg jacket. And it is important underway that you do wear your leg jacket, because many things can happen. And this is the proclamation. It's a brief summary of what the proclamation is saying, and we're asking the town council and the mayor to sign this. And we're doing it early this month, trying to get the word out come 1st of May. Last year, it was sort of a rush getting the word out to everybody. So, we appreciate your...
And if I may add, the proclamation states that May 17th through the 23rd is the National Safe Voting Week. And I have this proclamation, and it says, "I urge all those who vote to vote smart, vote safe, wear and practice voting habits. And we support the goals of the North American Safe Voting Campaign as we do every year." And, someone?
If we could get a picture with you?
Oh, yes.
Appreciate it.
Yes, we need a vote.
Make a motion for a second.
We have a motion that we accept the proclamation of National Safe Voting.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, vote, please.
Bannon, yes.
Natalia, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Wendell, yes.
So moved by unanimous consent.
I think they were gonna do it.
I said you have miles to go. You have right here.
Ron, thanks, Ron.
Get in there, Ron.
We will give you a picture.
Keep her wrinkled out a little bit, okay?
You want it wrinkled that way?
Just get it over there.
To the best part.
Not a movie camera door, stop.
Oops. Ron!
Are you turning moving?
I am. Oh, yeah, Ron, you're gonna get it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stand there.
I'm not.
Oh, yours is camera shot.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you. So many changes. Where are we? We have a name. This is an action item, a name for the former library building. This is exciting news as we go forward.
We discussed this last month and tabled it to this month. We have received a few possible names. I think the mayor was, had submitted a few of the names that we had presented. Also, I'd like to remind council, and hopefully everyone has talked about, thinking about what means. The use of the building that is planned is council meetings, board meetings, commission meetings, recreation programs, community events, promoting civic engagement with our citizens, and any outreach programs. And we've provided several different ideas. At last month, we talked about, obviously, if we want to have Cape Charles in the name.
And we sent out an email. I don't know if any of you responded. I did. You were supposed to pick your choice. I think more have been added on, but there's some great choices, but what we decide tonight is it forever. So...
Until the next council.
Name's in now or wait for discussion?
What name?
I call it Cassette Hall. Cassette Rose across the street. He was one of the founders of the town.
Cassette Hall?
Cassette Hall.
Cassatt.
Cassatt, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Cassette Hall.
I thought we'd hopefully agreed that Cape Charles was supposed to be in the name. And I think they, I think the first two choices in the staff report are the best. And the first four uses the town manager, I believe, has read were places to hold meetings. And so I would think that Cape Charles Meeting Hall would be more appropriate.
I like Community Place.
I like Civic Center, just from the definition of civic engagement.
It's a tie.
It mixes community and government.
What do you think, Joe?
I agree with Steve right now. I think Civic Center, Cape Charles Civic Center, gives it a clear definition of all the uses that we want.
It's pretty contrary to what most people think, you know, of a civic center, a former church. Anyway, a...
Former house.
It was a former library?
Well, it is a church.
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 You. Well, Mike, what do you think?
I'd like Cape Charles Meeting Hall.
Okay.
Whoa.
There you go. We don't have many agreeing. Okay, so if those are your choices, we can move on this evening, if we could.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
That's what I'm...
We need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we named Cape Charles Meeting Hall.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Raise your hand. All righty then. So, that motion is gone, so now we need another motion?
I make a motion, we call it the Cape Charles Civic Center.
Civic Center. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Might be lost, you may as well vote.
Three in favor. Anyone opposed?
That's it.
Okay, that's it. Cape Charles Civic Center. That's how we roll with everyone. All right. New business, National Safe Voting. Notice how they left quickly. They stayed. You're gonna stay. They're still here. Grounds Maintenance Service Contract Extension. Mr. Farber, this is an action item. Is this you?
Yeah, this would be me.
I do need you with you. Do we have questions?
This is, this is merely an extension of a contract that was signed back in 2009?
Eleven.
Okay, 2011. This would be...
It's the last extension.
This is the last, this is the last extension. So basically, we'll, he'll be providing the same services for the same amount of money, except for a couple of small changes that actually reduce the amount of the contract. So...
So we'll be putting this back out to bid next spring?
Next year. And, you know, the total budget is like for $50,000, because included in the contract are things that are, things that we elect to do during the year. They're not scheduled as they're needed. We haven't done, like weed eating the hump, mulching around town, the hedge over at the water plant. These are things that when we want them done, which you call them, have done. And also allows us to do other things, you know, but the...
Currently, in our current budget this year, we have $50,000. We expect to, I think, year-to-date, we're right around $45,000. And this, as you've seen, some of the areas, basic mowing decreased a little bit over last year, as well as the central park maintenance decreased a little bit. The total for all the areas, and as the maintenance is outlined in the staff report, is $44,956. And we anticipate using, spending the $50,000 this year, and we also have $50,000 in a proposed FY15 budget that we're working on now.
I was actually pleased to see that overall, it looks like the contract decreased about 9%, about $3,500 in savings, which is great. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the one-year extension of the grounds maintenance services contract, including maintenance of central park and other areas. As described above with East Shore Landset Management Incorporated.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Shall move by unanimous consent. Thank you. Resort Town Entrance Overlay.
Give me one more. Oh, the nation.
I spent the National Police Week Proclamation Society. Is this your first time at the microphone?
It is. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council and Town Manager. National Police Week is a time in which our country and local communities recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of men and women in law enforcement who have been killed in the line of duty while protecting and safeguarding our communities. There are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in our communities across the United States. Throughout each year, nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported, which result in approximately 16,000 injuries. Since the first law enforcement death was reported in 1791, almost 20,000 officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty. Although law enforcement has proven to be a dangerous profession, the brave men, the brave men and women of law enforcement continue to walk out of their homes every day and night, not knowing if they will return home to see their families again. This act alone takes a brave and heroic person. In 2013, 105 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty. And as of April 18th, 2014, 31 law enforcement officers have been killed. The sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during National Police Week at the Candlelight Vigil in Washington, DC on May 13th, 2014. The Cape Charles Police Department is asking the community to leave a porch light on during National Police Week to show your support for the brave men and women of law enforcement. National Police Week will be taking place from May 11th, 2014, to May 17th, 2014. Thank you for your continued support and appreciation. Cape Charles Police Department.
Thank you. So I have a proclamation number 20140424 in honor of Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. I need a roll call vote to award this. Mr. Panik?
Need a motion.
Motion.
Need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Natalia, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Wendell, yes.
So moved by unanimous consent. Chief?
Go to all.
Y'all gotta go to the front of the podium. I don't wanna be in the foreground. Take background.
Chief in there. Let the chief in there.
Flash?
No. Okay, let's see. The flash is gonna be on. Ron, get up here. Okay. Take a port.
Okay. Were we smiling? Anyway, thank you.
I'll do it. One for the real paper.
Excuse me?
Have it back for you, okay? Here we go. Smile. Good. Good. Great. Show those choppers, bro.
I'm sending one.
He'll send you one.
I'll get one.
Historic Town Entrance Overlay. Count Fanner, Mr. Testament?
All right. We provided this in a packet tonight, kind of as an update and refresher with the county going over their zoning ordinance, reviewing the modifications. The attached language was submitted to Northampton County in late January. This was after a joint meeting between the Town Plan Commission and the County Plan Commission. Prior to that, this had been worked on in 2010.
They can't hear you. Sorry.
Prior to, prior to, earlier, the late 2013, when we picked it back up, the last time it had been worked on was 2010. Somehow, it got put into the back burner, and we brought it, brought it back up, finished working based off of some previous comments that Northampton County had made on it. After the joint plan commission's meeting, the draft was forwarded to town council to receive any comment. That was, was submitted to Northampton County in late January. To date, the county planning commission has not given any feedback on it. Peter, Peter Stith in the county planning department said that they've been, as of when, it was kind of bogged down with the zoning ordinance overall. It was, I think, our intention that this would kind of be included with these discussions, but it's their choice when they look at it, when they review it. And it seems that they're trying to get their rewrite done, and then look at this as a, kind of an afterpiece to place into it, if they'd be willing to adopt it. As was mentioned earlier... As was mentioned earlier, some of the towns, including Exmoor, have been passing and discussing resolutions referring to the new zoning for the county. Reading through what Exmoor approved as their resolution, in my opinion, I think it sounds a little combative, where we're trying to work more cooperatively with the county to get the Town Edge or Town Entrance Overlay District incorporated into their ordinance. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that we should necessarily go that route. Of course, it's up to the council, that's, that's kind of my opinion on it. I think the way, it was, I guess I just think it was worded a little strong, a little combative, and we're trying to work with them to get this into their zoning ordinance. I think they would welcome some more cooperative stance in the town. So that's where we're at right now. Hopefully, before too long, we can get some kind of feedback. I talked with Charles McSwain two days ago, and he said they are, they are interested in picking this back up and getting some feedback to us. And we can, we can go from there, whether it's making further revisions or if it gets adopted. We just have to wait and see at this point.
As well as, I have a meeting with Katie Nez tomorrow, and this is also on the agenda, to talk to her as well, to see how we can get this going. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. As I said, tomorrow I have a meeting with Katie Nez on several different things and trying to see how we can get this moving on the Planning Commission. It's on the agenda, so I can, I'll call that the council as well.
Rob, do you know offhand what the underlying zoning districts are for our Town Edge?
The ones that are proposed zoning, I think it's, let's see. It's a mixture. There are areas that are residential. They have three different residential classifications that will be near the Cape Charles area. Agriculture and commercial.
See, the first time I went through it, I thought I saw electronic billboards were banned. I can't find it's there, and I asked you about it.
Yeah.
I think the Watcher Creek personally, this and its all taste.
Right.
The Watcher Creek billboard is offensive.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, and...
Supervisor Hall has a one in his property up there on 13 that he lights up for every...
For every meeting.
Every meeting.
The proposed zoning ordinance for the county, I did go back and double-check. Signs like the one around Watcher Creek, and there's another one a little further north with kind of the animated lights there. They'll be banned throughout the county, no animated...
We don't have to have them in this?
No.
And I agree with you, Rob. I read Exmoor's resolution, I thought it was much too strongly worded.
We have a very good rapport with the county, and we talked about it. We said that wasn't the approach we should take at this time. It's not us. If Exmoor feels comfortable with that, that's fine, but... Thank you.
I have a comment. Corridor overlay has been discussed, I guess, 20 years at a minimum?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? And originally, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you're anxious to do that, but the idea of protecting the, the whole, with the current zoning, the map I've seen, the north side of 184 from the intersection down to Parsons Side, and even a small parcel on the west side, west, north, west side, is being proposed commercial. Now, if traditional interest, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about trying to protect the entrance to Cape Charles from the intersection, and there's been, you know, a very good beautification project at the intersection. But now we see contempt with the idea that the county is going to zone commercial during that whole area. And to me, I think, I think it's in Cape Charles' best interest that it happened, that we reserve the historic interest of the town and object to that commercial zoning from Parsons Circle to the intersection on the north side. That's what the original attempt of the corridor overlay was. Since it's been changed a lot, since 2010, since I've been working on it here recently. And I guess I was curious how my fellow council people feel about that.
I will say, if, if they were to adopt what we've given them, that will kind of preserve that area a little bit more. Some of the uses that they would propose for by right in their commercial district, we have suggested to be made as conditional use, so they couldn't just go in, you know, without a little further review.
I don't hold a whole lot of hope that they're gonna... They're not willing to discuss it till after they make their decisions. Usually you need to work something into the decision process, but I guess I heard Chris... What was your opinion of that commercialization there?
There's been big fights in the past over keeping that, the way in, no commercial. And I believe at Kings Street Landing, they put the berm in, which is just a little mound, you know, to protect the housing, so it can keep it rural looking. But I, I would rather not see commercial on the way in.
And when I spoke with Mr. McSwain yesterday or two days ago, he did mention that they are still welcoming written comments. So if there's anything that you want to submit officially from the town, or anybody wants to submit individually...
I'm not opposed to submitting something that says we don't want to see the Town Edge go away. I just don't want to model it after Exmoor.
Right.
Right.
Well, I guess I'll comment on Chris's statements is that if we don't want to see commercial there, and if you don't want to see the Town Edge go away, then we're gonna have to communicate that in some official way to the county.
That's what we're doing.
And I did get an email too outlining some recent notes from the County Planning Commission, and it sounds like that the Planning Commission, while they're taking another look at it, they are kind of reevaluating the decision to take Town Edge out. It sounded like some of their planning commissioners see the value in it. They're also looking at some of the uses that are currently listed as special use, and the proposed version has it by rights. So it's, you know, it speeds up the process, but it also allows for things to go in without taking a closer look. They're relooking at a lot of that stuff. So there's still some, some changes that could be made to it before it goes back to their board supervisor. But like I said, if we want to submit something officially saying that we want the Town Edge to stay in place, then they're welcoming written comments for it. Right.
Because it's commercial now, like from the chair to the light down to past written house. It's already, that was already zoned commercial for your visitor. I think goes a little further than that.
What's the current zoning from Parsons Circle to 13? Isn't it, for the most part, you have the gas station, the old gas station on the corner?
Right.
That every sign, every real stick sign, it says commercial.
About half of it's already commercial. It's a little deceiving, because the biggest parcel way at the intersection is VDOT. And it's currently leased.
That's the agricultural plot.
Yeah, that's, it's VDOT ownership. It's not really ag... So if you, if you take that away, it's roughly half the parks. It's actually four parcels of, one, two, there's three. It's like, looks like there's seven that are zoned not commercial, but somewhere really teeny. It's about half the area that's zoned commercial.
Thank you. Maybe we can bring it to me?
You want to work on that?
Yeah, congratulations.
Now, how are we gonna get an agreement with... Anyway, I would suggest we have a workshop on what would be the comments of this council conveyed to the board supervisor.
I like that.
So I'd like to put that...
Maybe we ought to make a special meeting if we're gonna put forward a resolution.
Yeah.
Say that again?
So maybe you ought to make a special meeting. If we're gonna put forward a resolution, we could vote on it if we can agree to it.
Well, I'll make such a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
I like to hold it, I'll have it at three o'clock or four o'clock.
All in favor? Show of hands.
Could you repeat the motion, please, I'm sorry?
To have a special meeting?
Six o'clock.
And to then have Mr. Testament there and advise him and guide him to tell you what we want on our Town Edge, so that he...
If he's not gonna come with a proposed resolution...
We can, we can with a proposed resolution, right?
So do we need, do we need to vote on it that night?
Well, there's a hundred-day clock ticking.
Right, that's what I mean.
I'd like to, I'd like to. I think we would request that they stop that clock from ticking, but anyway, one thing at a time.
No, no intent to invite the Planning Commission to participate?
I didn't, what implied we should exclude them?
Well, I think that's what the Planning Commission is also waiting for, since we've submitted that.
I would say, yes, we're gonna have a, I think we should have a work session before we try to do a resolution of any sort. And we have a joint session with Planning Commission.
Now, how does that pan, pan out with the hundred-day...
When the hundred days is up?
Why don't we wait the less likely are to consider what we're saying?
I mean, when did they give it to the Planning Commission? It was a month ago, was it?
We can confirm that. We have two budget meetings over the next two weeks, so we could also add a special meeting to, on the front end. And we can find out the dates.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Show them a bird.
The motion was for a special meeting. That was, okay, instead of a work session that...
No, it was for a work session.
The motion was for, okay.
The last item this evening that was added on, yesterday, I guess it was, we received an invitation. You didn't all receive it yesterday, some received it today. But we received an invitation for the, excuse me? An invitation for the grand opening of the Cape Charles Yacht Center. It's gonna be huge, the governor's gonna be there, and it's gonna be huge. Did I mention that? Music, dancing, huge. And it's on our next council meeting, which is May 15. Having said that, I spoke to their staff people today and was assured that it will not end at 7:00. It says 5:00 to 7:00 on the invitation, it will not end at 7:00. And we're also welcome to come from 5:00 to 5:40, since it's very close. So I thought that, it's not my decision, it's yours, what you would like to do. And there you go. That's it. What would you like to do about the party that falls on the same day as our May council meeting? Anyone? Go ahead, Frank.
Well, even though the invitation says party, I think there's a lot of ceremony that's gonna be involved. Quite a, quite a large investment by the whole family and their investors. And it offers a lot of hope for serious economic development. In my conversation with an air recently, Lee said he had over 90 applications for jobs, and they're gonna have 18 of them filled in January, in April this month, as well as some 70 appointments to have boats work. So it's a pretty significant event. With all that said, I would, I would hope that we could move our meeting so that we can be there with the board supervisor, the governor, and what, the other officials that are there.
It starts at 5:00.
It starts at 5:00. That's, that's the ceremonial part of it. I think that's the most important part to the camp, rather than go later. So I was hoping that, you know, in my opinion, that we could reschedule our meeting so that we can participate in this grand opening ceremony, when the governor's, and the governor being in town.
I agree with you, Frank. And I think that it's something not only you may want to do, but I think it's something we need to do. It is a significant investment. It's the biggest thing we've got going at the moment, outside of Bay Shore. And they've already reaped all of their, their benefits. And I think that we need to show town support for this initiative. So, yeah, I think the meeting can be moved. We moved this month's meeting.
We had two council members that were already said we're not...
We moved this meeting because of a religious holiday, and for an event that happens four days ahead of that religious holiday. It was easy enough to do that. I would make the motion that we postpone our May meeting one week.
I would second that motion.
Any comment for the comment?
Comment, I would make a comment that I, we schedule our meetings on the third Thursday of the month. Add in the night of... We know that our meeting next year in May will be on the third Thursday of the month. And if we had conflicts with... I, I don't disagree with the importance of the event whatsoever. I would be delighted to attend this event, but I think it's not proper to reschedule government around a party.
Or around a religious event.
Well, if, if because of an individual's religious belief, we can't make a quorum to hold a meeting, is one thing, but if we can't make a quorum for a meeting because everybody's at a party, that's wrong.
I don't think that's the point.
I understand what you're saying, but I think that it's unfortunate that they chose this day. But, and I would be delighted to go, I think it's a wonderful thing, but I don't think we should reschedule the meeting around this event.
I just don't want to hear on the tom-toms that, oh, oh, there's gonna be, you know, wine, wine, boats, and happiness, you know, and we should be here for my $46 and seven to ten cents a month, you know, be here at this. I think it is one of the bigger things probably going to happen in Cape Charles before I die. I've been waiting for it a long time, and that is getting close. So I, if there's a consensus of it, I will go with, with the group. I think it is a very, very big thing. I agree with Mike, but I don't want to, I don't want to start hearing all this crap about you doing this, you're doing that.
There is an alternative, just we'd send the ambassador.
Ambassador's having a, out of meeting time.
But I will, I will go with the majority of that.
I wonder if Frank is correct in saying that they are going to have a formal presentation, and then it's gonna be like party time? Instead of, is that your understanding?
Well, that is my understanding, that it's not...
It's not specific.
How did you have the governor and board of supervisors, they're gonna be introducing people? You're just not gonna just start having a party without some form of, you know, I guess I'm making somewhat of an assumption. But I would think that's more than likely what will be happening. You think they would not recognize the governor and just start hitting the wine and cheese bar?
Is there...
Well, I was wondering, well, she did say today, with their five, that, that we would get the recognition. I just say, that's what she told me. Well, instead of rescheduling our meeting to another date, why don't we delay it an hour? Instead of starting at 6:00, start at 7:00, so that... No, no, you need to start it earlier. You're not gonna go to that thing and want to leave. You need to start it earlier. You started at 5:00, just keep it the same date. Start it at 5:00, and then if Frank is willing, we'll be finished at 7:00. No, wait a minute, not 5:00, I guess we never started at 4:00.
Well, we do have a motion and second.
I know, we're having a discussion.
I know, I'm, I'm offering that as part of the discussion.
Me too. Well, there you have it. We have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further...
There's only, one other thing, is this hall available on the 22nd? I'm not throwing this out as...
Either, I don't know.
Well, Dave made an offer already. He said we could meet in the other building. You said we could meet in the other building? That'd give you extra week to do that.
Yeah? So we have a motion on the table to change the date of our May council meeting and we have a second. If there is no further discussion, show of hands, all in favor of changing the date, raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, so...
Something to do.
So move. And guess what? We will not be here. Have you said that already, Mr. Testament? Okay, so now we go into the mayor council, five minutes, Joe, you need that timer.
Have you got it?
The timer. And I would like to go first. I would like to, for the record, make a statement that I have been reading, I do read the wave and I did read Mr. Wendell's art editorial on parking and giving up a hundred and sixty lots. And that didn't bother me and I didn't think it was terribly written, but I read all the comments and all the people that bothered to sign their names. And the first thing that came to my mind was an argument I had one year with Mr. Evans and he came to me and the two of us debated it and discussed it. And then we went about our business. And I think what bothers me the most is that the citizens of this town are not capable or care enough to come and say, is that true? Did you really say that? We are full grown adults. Instead, instead, we read what we read and we believe it. So, having said that, Dory, are you writing? Pay attention. For the record, late this afternoon, Mr. Patrick Hand said to me, for the record, "I did not have a plan six months ago, therefore I could not have spoken to council." That's a fact. Also said, "For the record, I never met with the mayor and three council people back door anything." Do you have that? No, that was my question, do you have it?
Yeah.
That's all, no ma'am, that's it. So I have the minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's not the recording, there's nothing on there, but it didn't matter. I went a step further and I called Mr. Hand and I am tired of people's characters. What if I never read the wave? I'm dead in the water because I'm being eaten alive and I have no idea I'm being eaten alive. So I would much rather get bashed by Mr. Evans to my face like a man and I'll dish back whatever I can dish back like a man or woman, whatever I choose to be. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
If I had to get attended the meeting, Mayor, you'd have heard his comments.
Yeah.
Let's see, Dory? You're disrupting this meeting.
Frank, is this your five minutes?
It is, it's a part of my five minutes. I don't think there's anything in there where you can't stop and start a few times. But that meeting, I was astounded to hear him, his comments. And perhaps you should, if you're not gonna attend those meetings, then you should listen to the tape so that you would know what you were talking about. The idea that we are using, losing the use, I understand where the ownership lies. My problem is with lack of planning that led us to this spot. And for Mr. Patrick Hand to state that he's been working with the mayor and three council people and other members of, maybe for six or seven months, I find that, I would think those, I had three council people, perhaps not a disservice by not bringing that information forward so that we could talk about the project, plan or no plan, he obviously was discussing some aspects of it, we should encourage, should have, we're over there and we should say, hey, this is a part of, this component of it we like, that's great. But here's a huge problem we might have going forward if we don't make, if we don't negotiate successfully or mitigate, if we find some other plan. So I guess at this juncture, I'm curious who the three people that were in...
I'm very curious who they are.
He said there weren't any. I called him, I spoke to him.
I'm obviously not one and I...
You and Heather.
Outside of a council session? Have you ever spoken to Patrick Hand at any time on the street?
On the street.
In a coffee house?
No.
Ever?
Never. Not about this. I talked to him at the end of his, in the first meeting, but I have a question. Now, y'all, we want, diversion tech, I mean, if you were, if you were one of those three to simply say it, I was curious.
We weren't.
Stop. I, I missed the first meeting.
Or did he miss the...
No, no, no. I have not spoken to Patrick Hand separately, separately, anytime. I missed the first meeting when Mr. Hand, Patrick, I'd heard on the streets now that he was gonna buy B-Log. I knew that, but that's all you hear, because he's gonna sell blue. At the first meeting, it was a closed session, I did, I was not, I had to leave and he said he would talk to me. He'd never talked to me. The only time I've been with Patrick Hand was that last meeting two weeks ago, so I was not one of the three.
I made his copies for a closed session.
Okay.
That's it.
But that's, that's it, I'm not, I, everything that I got has been secondhand after that from council members and from Heather. But so, I don't know, but when I saw the three things, by six or seven months, I said, I never heard of them.
I think with all the hard work of all the different committees, to the committees promoting coming to Cape Charles, the tourism, everything from the new love sign and all they did, that we've got ourselves in a rough spot down there with losing the use of the parking spots. And I think, you know, it's a function of terrible planning and I'm curi, you know, our plan going forward didn't start to materialize until the assessment of what Plan B is and how to, how much to value a little bit of parking that would be, that we are looking at buying. Anyway, we put ourselves behind the eight ball and unnecessary. However, when the gentleman says, "I've been working with the mayor and three council people for six or seven months," I took him for what he said and I, now you got council people saying that didn't happen, so...
And did you ask what the other options might be for parking? And did anyone ask you, because it was a closed session, how much that parking was going to cost, that would be on the backs of the taxpayers? Have you asked if we're looking at other options? I mean, property comes up all the time, there's a huge lot.
I know we're looking at other options, but, you know, apparently some of us, according to Mr. Hand, knew that we were gonna be in this predicament six to seven months ago and some of us didn't. So only one council person said they were...
Well, feel free to call Mr. Hand, all of you.
Ask him.
Ask him.
Those are the three words.
I did.
Ask him.
And he said, "I'd rather not say." Okay, that's on the record.
But he told me, he said, "I never met with you or a single council person singularly or in a group six months ago." That's it.
I think the phrase was working with him.
No, he did not.
You should listen to the tape.
I don't need to, I talked to him. Next.
Now, that wasn't all my five minutes, it was all the coffee.
I, I...
They talked, except Doris had a comment too.
Now, all that more constructive lighter, yeah, everybody all defensive here. I would ask the town manager that, I think this love walk, dance walk is a great thing. I think that's real positive and I hope the event raises the amount of money they need to accomplish that. However, the event that, in the event that it doesn't, if there's room in our budget without going over budget, I would hope that after they've made their, the group has made their sincere fundraising effort, if we have such funds available to make that happen sooner than later, that that would be given strong consideration here.
Not with the T O T next year, that goes right there.
Kevin, comments, Joe, your five minutes, that clock. Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Having said that, the announcements. Of course, tomorrow night is the blessing of the fleet, April twenty-fifth, the Eastern Shore Heritage Trail, April twenty-fifth, blessing of the fleet. The twenty-seventh, blessing of the worms, May first, town council budget work session, but I forgot, April twenty-ninth is the first, I believe, of two candidates' forums. May fourth is the second one, May sixth is election day and May fifteen is not our next regular council meeting. It will be on the twenty-second. At that point, I'd like the motion to adjourn.
Don't forget, April twenty-sixth is the shrimp boat.
April twenty-sixth is the shrimp boat.
Saturday, that's what I said.
Saturday, yeah.
Any motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All in favor? So move by him.